All right, listen, I'll call the meeting's order and we'll have a roll call.
Okay, trustee Paul Wax, trustee listener.
Yeah.
Trustee Mulvaney, trustee underdog, here, trustee Rubin, here, trustee Reed. This is Roland.
I'm here.
We've got a quorum.
We are not live streaming this meeting tonight, but we're video recording it and we'll make the recording available on the village YouTube channel. First, by any business time, but the comment is portion of the meeting allows for those in attendance to address the board regarding non-agenda items. I'll ask the public how it relates to agenda items be made when you reach that item on the agenda. I think note, by the way, that trustee Mulvaney is now here. Almost, almost, you know, got you under the bell. Uh, no, you're totally okay. Uh, all habits should be three minutes, so I'll notify the speaker when they're done. For any, um, very public meetings, I'll say, a non-agenda item. Oh, okay. Um, the next item on the agenda is lead water service line replacement policy discussion. I'll ask for a public works director, Dave Mouts, present on here, okay? Don't blow it with the visual aids.
I can do it.
Yeah, why not?
Uh, good evening. We're, uh, we're back to discuss, uh, with the board again tonight, uh, the topic that we we presented in May and updated in September of last year. Uh, but before I, uh, before I get started, I would want to recognize I've got joining us tonight, uh, water plant superintendent Alex Urbangi, general superintendent Don Kirk, to participate in the, in the discussion and help answer questions if I have. Alex and Don will be, will be integrally involved with the implementation of this program in the coming years, along with the voyage engineer and our water distribution supervisor. But, yeah. So just by way of the briefest of review, the, uh, the lead service line replacement act of twenty twenty-one, required the removal, required the removal and replacement of all the lead service lines in the state of Illinois by the year twenty sixty-seven. Uh, there, there are some requirements that are already in motion, uh, the first two, uh, of which the, the village is on top of, and that is, uh, having an inventory of our existing lead service lines. And then the development of a plan that's done incrementally, the submitted to the IPA. Um, we, we, uh, there's no, I think it's, it's worth noting that there is really no disagreement among water utilities across the state, that the removal of lead service lines is, is is, is the right thing to do, it's advisable for the safety of all water utility customers. Um, and based on our, our inventory of, of, of known or suspected lead service lines, the village has until the year twenty forty-two, or about fifteen years, to replace all the suspected lead service lines in, in, in our system. Uh, next slide, Dan, the existing conditions, here's our latest update, we're slightly more than five hundred of our total services in town are, are known or suspected lead services. This number was, uh, was, was verified and updated during our water, our recent water meter replacement program. So we're, we're relatively confident in this number. Um, and while we've got neighbors, uh, in our vicinity that have much larger numbers than we do, it doesn't diminish the fact that this will still be a a yeoman's task to, to address five hundred lead services in fifteen years. Uh, and just, just by way of review, uh, the, according to village code, the entire service line from the, from the main to the meter is, is a private responsibility. However, as we've said before, the IPA really doesn't care about that, regardless of the ownership and the cost responsibility. The village is ultimately responsible to see that these services get replaced. And, and it's kind of a default assumption that it's the village's responsibility. The, the cost estimate for full, a full lead service line replacement ranges from ten thousand to twenty thousand dollars. And, and that's a wide range, and a lot of that depends on the location of the main within the right away, whether it's a long service or a short service, and then there are other factors that come into play. That's from a planning standpoint, that's, that's the number we're kind of working off of. Recent permit history has borne that out. Slide please. Staff has been active since we last discussed this with the board and communication with, uh, with neighboring communities, uh, none of whom is exempt from the same requirement. Uh, the majority of our neighboring communities have adopted or are considering some type of cost share program. Uh, Deerfield, Glenview, Palatine, and Oneeka have fifty percent cost share programs in place. And the cap on those programs varies from three thousand to ten thousand dollars. Pendleworth, Northfield, Northbrook, and Womet are a little behind that process, they're, they're still confirming their inventory and formulating plans. But, but it's safe to say that all communities are interested in what, what each other are doing, uh, so that there are outliers. Now, there are, there are several communities that there's more survey details in the, in the write-up that, uh, have chosen to place all that responsibility on the property owner. Uh, and that sounds great in theory, but, uh, we'll see how that plays out. Next slide, please, Jan. So we, we talked in general when, when we were before the board last about a, a, a cost share program, and so we've given this a lot of time and thought, and, uh, and what we're proposing tonight, and it's a, it's a proposal for the board's consideration, would be the, uh, the, the details of, of such a cost share program. As we've broken this into kind of three different, uh, categories, uh, the first being emergency replacements, that's, that's a property that experiences a leak on their lead service line, and comes in and seeks a permit from the village. Where in the past, uh, one could repair a, a lead service line, while we would always advise against that, they could not, uh, that's no longer acceptable to the IP, no partial repairs, partial replacements. So we, we average, you know, we issue probably twenty to twenty-five permits annually for for private wire service repairs, and the majority of those are lead services. Over the last three years, you'll see it's ranged from, you know, half dozen to a dozen lead service lines. That's just on, on leaks on existing services.
I should present, is that because the lead service lines are old, that they're more likely the ones that are going?
They are definitely more susceptible, uh, to, to leaks and changes with, you know, ground conditions or just, uh, the age and stage of that lead pipe, but that's, uh, that's exactly the case. And so what we're, we're proposing for these emergency replacements is for, is, is, is for the resident to, uh, seek out proposals for the full replacement. And, and, and we'll, we'll note that for each of these with, with the, uh, with the submittal and the compliance with our, with it, with our, uh, cost share program, the village, upon completion, the village would reimburse, uh, cover fifty percent of the cost of that replacement with a not to exceed cap of ten thousand dollars. The second, uh, category is planned replacements, and that is the, the water mains that we replace on an annual basis through our CIP program. Um, our historical practice has been for twenty-five years, and that will continue, is that we replace every, every water service with a new water main replacement from the water main up to the box, from the tap on the main to the B-box in the public right away. And the reason for that is, is, is multiple, primarily, uh, to, to keep all that, all that pipe under the pavement at the same age and stage. And even, even an existing copper service under the pavement, uh, we, we, we avoid any kind of a splice, any kind of coupler, and we want that to be a continuous piece of copper. But we have, and then we'll continue to replace the services on water main replacements up to the box. So on, on these planned replacements for lead services, same, the same, uh, rationale will apply. The homeowner will have to seek out proposals for the, the balance of that service from the box to the meter. Uh, they will likely be able to, we've, we've done this in the past, be able to get a a proposal from the village's water main contractor as well to include in their, in their analysis. And then upon selection of a contractor, coordination of that work uh, with the village's contract, um, the program would, would offer a fifty percent cost share of those costs from the, their costs from the B-box to the meter. Again, with that not to exceed cap of ten thousand. We're, we're expecting those costs would be, would be considerably less than the full, full service replacement. And the village is already picking up the cost, if you will, for, you know, half, a, a third or a half of the cost of that replacement with the water main project. And then the, the third and final area will be voluntary replacements, you've got an existing lead service. It may not be causing any issues, but, uh, but you seek out, similar to the emergency replacement, you seek out proposals from qualified contractors. And, uh, for the full replacement of that service, and, and they, those, in those instances, that property owner would be, would be eligible for a fifty percent cost share with a not to exceed cap of ten thousand dollars. A couple other bullet points, next slide please, Jan, before we open up the discussion. Um, we would propose for, for the full replacement option, either the emergency or the, uh, or, or the voluntary, that we would continue to waive permit and tapping fees as we have done in recent years, and would provide some level of assistance with the restoration of, uh, the public right of way, whether that be pavement curve, uh, or sidewalk. Um, the cost share program that we're proposing would be modeled and managed in a similar manner to the current sanitary sewer flood prevention rebate program that we've had in place for twenty-five years. Uh, that's a program that we fund and budget for annually. The reimbursements of that program, although it's a lesser amount, are offered upon compliance with the, the, the requirements of the program uh, on a first come, first served basis. But we have, and we would continue, we would offer with this program, somebody does everything as, that we ask, but we've expended those budgeted dollars in, in a given year, that, that, that application would be eligible to roll over to the following year, assuming we're, we're going to be budgeting this as the, as we've shown in the CIP for the foreseeable future. Eligible costs would, would be the, just the, the, uh, the material and the labor cost to replace the service line itself, no, no private restoration, any restoration costs on private property, whether they're inside or outside the house. Uh, and we are proposing, at least for consideration, that this would be a program that would begin with lead service line replacement work in the calendar year twenty twenty-three. Although we've noted in the write-up that the board was interested in, in discussing some kind of a look back period, um, we'd want to hear that too. So with that, that's kind of the, the, uh, short overview of what we're proposing, and, and with that, I would open it up to any questions, uh. Again, Don and Alex, uh, will join in, in, in the discussion. And, um, we, we want to hear, hear from you. The, the next steps would be to bring a formal program forward to the board in February to adopt, and then there may be some, uh, code, code amendments that would go along with that.
Thanks for a clear uh, presentation. Um, I, I, let me add the last point you made, which was the look back. Yeah, you're sort of, if you go to Costco, you bought something, but they put it on sale the next month, you get a month. You know, they'll give you the sale price. On the other hand, if you're Elon Musk and you just bought a Tesla last year, they've just knocked the prices down by ten or fifteen thousand dollars, you're screwed, and those are the two models. I, it looks like we could afford it. I sort of like a little bit of look back. I hate, you know, no good deed goes unpunished, and so somebody, you know, they get the vibe, they can see this is happening. They voluntarily, maybe, you know, they've got a problem, they involuntarily fix it, and then they find out that next year, there's all this money. So, uh, looking at the numbers, and we have, looks like a dozen in twenty-two and half dozen in twenty-one, and then another dozen in twenty or something like that, so we're not talking about huge numbers, but I wonder if we, I would be willing to consider a look back what, less month or twenty-two, maybe twenty-one, you know, so that people don't feel they're totally being taken advantage of.
Just, just, uh, for reference, we had, uh, we had an, an active service leak that, that the property owner over, uh, on the, on the west side of town was found out in, in early December that they had a, a lead service line to replace, so that they completed work literally a month ago. Just, just for reference.
Right, and, and probably, I don't know if you
guys, if you recall, I mean, there was probably a repair that was, was north of fifteen grand.
So, I, I, it's anyway, I, I I, I'm not looking for, you know, Glencoe larges, we don't usually pay for people's stuff, but we're doing that going forward, and I think they want, you know, maybe a two or three-year look back with the amount declining. So that the twenty-two amount would be more, yeah, maybe the twenty-two amount is half, is five thousand. And the twenty-one amount is three thousand, you know, something, so that and, you know, whoever misses is going to be aggravated, but further back it goes, the less aggravated. And it's, to me, that seems like the Glencoe way, so.
And I'd say thing for that, we'd have to make sure that it's same ownership, so you wouldn't be reimbursing a home.
Right, somebody who's paid, somebody who's paid for it's gotta be, you know, what otherwise gets covered by our program, you're exactly right, we're, we're not, you know, if you moved into town, congratulations, lucky to get your free government wonderful services, but we're not, you know.
And to, to trustee listener's point, the mechanics of the program, as I said, is, is going to model our sanitary sewer program, and for that, we do require uh, submittal, you know, proof of a property ownership, it's not, you know, just take people's word for, for things, and so that, that's easily managed. I, I guess, one thing I would, one comment about, we do have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars budgeted in calendar year twenty-three. Uh, it's our belief that, you know, that we, we hope to incent more of those voluntary replacement, we will, we will, we will push information out early this spring to the, to these five hundred plus property owners, we haven't done that for probably seven or eight years. And you may have some new property owners that, that's the first time they're, hopefully not, that may be the first time they're hearing that they've got a lead service.
Well, you know, with the look back, um, if, you know, if we have a certain amount of money, we're spending in twenty-three, they maybe wait for their money. Uh, you know, and it's they might be as happy as if they got it right then, they'll be happier if it wasn't coming.
And thanks, um, one, so the law took effect in terms of not being able to make repairs, you must make replacements, et cetera. Uh, twenty? Twenty twenty or?
Twenty twenty-one.
In twenty twenty-one. So anybody that was doing it in twenty twenty technically wasn't doing it because of the act, the government wasn't putting their thumb on the scale, right? Right, we were just, it was, it was through the village, the water utilities' effort to strongly encourage for, for all the reasons, but we were encouraging, yeah.
Well, but we've been doing that for years. I, I, I got that, and, and, you know, in theory, it would be lovely, we could say to everybody, we want to treat everyone the same. You know, you get a certain period of time to look back, and I, you could draw the line at twenty-one, or I mean.
Well, I mean, it's only, it's that, it, it's just in terms of trying to find a line, you know, why not nineteen, why not eighteen? We've been encouraging it for a long time, but I think there's some sense of of appropriateness in saying, from the time the law took effect, and therefore it changed your set of options. Since we've decided to do this now, we will look back to that point, again, this is my view, I have no particular, you know, if you're talking about five or six more people, it's, it's relatively small dollars, although I'll point out, you go back to the twenty-six people, and you have a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget, you just spend it on them. If you're thinking about the ten thousand dollar cap, you, you may have.
No, I, I would propose a not, they don't get the ten. They'd get, you know, say in twenty-two, they'd get five. And in twenty-one, they would get
I see.
Twenty-five hundred.
A little less than.
Or it's, you know, something, not, you know.
All right, well, whatever. I certainly don't object to the fairness element of that at all, um. The other thing, I just want to be clear, in addition to being the current homeowner, I'm assuming we wouldn't be reimbursing developers that is part of a redevelopment of the property, I think there was something about that in mature.
No, yeah, yeah, thanks for, thanks for noting that, yeah, we, that, that is a requirement of, of of new per, new construction and even major additions that they're replacing the service from the, from the main to the meter, and we're, we're not proposing that they would be eligible for the cost share.
You're talking about somebody that was and still is.
One question, just because we were on that fairness topic, so you mentioned the full option, um, was that for emergency replacements and voluntary replacements, and that the planned replacements, is that a it's a less expensive burden on the homeowner?
It is, because we're, where we're doing water main replacement, we're already replacing their service. You know, you know, a third or a half, roughly half of it.
You know, like, oh, so it's like, so.
So they would still be eligible for fifty percent of their cost with a cap of ten thousand, but they won't. But they will not, uh, they will not, typically, they will not hit that twenty thousand dollar bar before, for half the service.
Okay. So we propose fifty percent. And, um, we know it has to be done within twenty years, wasn't it?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, um, what is the ideal outcome? As far as the number that we have every year? And what we're spending? Um, because there are ways to incent people to get it done right away, or do we want to spread this out a little bit?
It's a fair question, I, I don't, I think we've, for planning purposes, have spread it out, at least in the, in the tenure CIP, but, uh, obviously you know, twenty twenty-three costs are going to be less than, than.
But it's just the review of this, the and, yeah, how are we?
Part of the reason we, when we, when we talked several months ago, we were, we had even thrown a placeholder number out there of less than ten thousand, but the more we talked, the feedback we heard from several board members is that, you know, we, we need, we need to raise that incentive to, to voluntarily do the work, because you know, three or five thousand dollar rebate might not be enough to to push somebody, particularly if it's, it's an existing service that is not giving them any issue today, um. We're hoping we can incent.
Well, we, so we, in theory, but lead is dangerous, you know, lead pipes are not dangerous if the water is treated properly. We treat our water properly, but they didn't in slims.
Um, so it's also, it's also good practice, and Alex has this conversation probably daily with, with lead service owners, just having a good flushing program with, you know, it's, it's that first flush in the morning, when you're going to have the heaviest lead, lead, lead concentration in the water, you want to run that cold water tap for five minutes every day, and you can you could reduce some of that exposure by doing that, it's, and again, talked about this previously, that lead is not in the water that we produce and that we use the water plant, it's, it's really within the, within the private systems, both exterior to the home and the private service, and then even, even some of the pipe and the solder joints inside the house.
So, I mean, for next, for twenty-three, we think we have quarter of a million dollars that's sort of allocated for this. Um, if we get a gold rush, this, we're going to have to give them a ticket for point four.
Because people, if you're going to have to do it at some point, get it done sooner, because you're getting right, clean water, I mean, it's, it's clean, it's fine, it's not like she's getting, but I just mean, sure, you're going to have to pay for it.
But at some point, you know, but like
what's the, how do we make sure it's spread out, or do we get, do you get in line?
Well, I think one of the things we're probably going to have to assess after a first year of a program like this is the interest. And, you know, we are in a better position than some of our neighboring communities with respect to the total number of these, we've got about five hundred of them, so we spread that out over fifteen years, thirty-three, thirty-four a year should be replaced against zero. I think the question may be, uh, in the first several years of this program, do we have to fund it at a higher level based on interest or not? And I think it's hard for us to guess at that right now, which is why we placed two hundred and fifty in the budget this year is really a starting point, we've, we've, um, we've included that, I think it's that same number for the whole CIP period, the whole ten year, is it two hundred and fifty a year? Uh, was there an annual escalator? I can't remember. But the, yes, the idea behind that is I would, I would assume that, for instance, if we send information out, um, you know, later this spring uh, to those five hundred homeowners and fifty of them circle back with us to say, we want to do this project, we want to get it going. Um, that is likely to indicate to us when we're building the budget for next year that we may need to elevate that amount that we allocate on an annual basis.
I think, uh, two things. We could step back and maybe ask Alex to repeat once again for the public what Santa's doing to protect the phosphate, talk about flushing, but maybe that's the thing. And, and then I think there's a few other data points that come back here, and one is how many good service lines will our CIP those people who are expecting to get a water main, we should know that, what even idea? That's going to give us a good estimate of how many of these five hundred are going to be, um, partially removed through the CIP. Those people should have a different touch point than, than the rest. Right, because they, it'd be pretty frustrating if you did it yourself, and the next year the CIP comes along and says, oh, well, you could have had half of that.
Yeah, no, that's a good point.
Well, that, that I think.
We have those, yeah, we have those.
That's an easy thing to assess, yeah. But anyways, I don't know if that's worth it, just one more time for the record, for, for those who might be listening.
So the water is treated with spore acid. What that does is it creates a coating on the inside of the plumbing. And it's a physical barrier between the lead and the water flowing through the pipes. We also have the ability to add, uh, caustic soda to the water to increase the pH so that the water is not as acidic and corrosive. One concern with, uh, lead plumbing, though, is even with this treatment, if a leak develops, that erodes that protective coating and can actually lead to increased levels of that, in that water. And that's something a homeowner may not know, they may just think you have low water pressure. And until that leak surface and is identified for repair, you know, those are things you are completely out of our control.
And I think it's worthwhile mentioning the testing. For those who are concerned and get a notice like this, you, the testing that's available.
Correct.
Yeah, we got information that, you know, historically, we've, we've mailed out as a brochure that we're looking to clean up and update, and, and, and it will be part of this this spring notification to these five hundred properties, in some cases it'll be reminder, review, but, you know, we believe in many cases it'll be probably first time read.
Yeah. I, I think, I suspect so. And then I had some specific questions about these three uh, programs and, uh, the contractor. So could you walk through who is the contractor for each of the three scenarios? Breaks and leaks, or I think, yeah, emergencies?
Sure, that's a good.
Contracting who?
And really, in all, in all three of these scenarios, the, the, the contractor will be a private utility contractor selected by the property owner. Some cases will assist, like I said, on the planned improvements, the village's contractor that's doing the water main work and replacing the service up to the box. We, we have had pretty good success, we, we, we build it into our plans, expects that that they, they will be asked to provide a an estimate to, a proposal to those homes with the lead services, which are identified as part of our plans. But, but these will be, I mean, by and large, it's a, it's a utility contractor, and we've got or we don't recommend a single contractor, we've got a list of, of, of experienced and qualified contractors that, that do work in the area, and it's, and it's, uh, it's only a handful, you know, that really, that really do this work, because mo, in most cases, uh, uh, the, the replacement work will leave by, by, through the use of the horizontal directional relation, uh, installation to reduce the surface disruption, and not every contractor is doing that or doing it well. So we'll, we, our antenna is up from day one, and we get a time, we get a call, or we observe nine times out of ten, it's, it's the village notifying the, the resident that they've got a leak. And, and, and that's Alex and Don and, and, uh, Frank Colletti, our water distribution supervisor, their, their radar's up. Frank Colletti, our water distribution supervisor, their, their radar's up. Our village engineer as well. So we're all in step on what, what, what the requirements are, what the options are, we'll. We'll, we'll hold the hand of a resident in securing proposals, reviewing proposals with them. Uh, so the last thing we need is some. Some wild card coming in and doing work for them. Uh, it's going to be a problem for them and in turn a problem for us.
Okay, so for the emergency replacements. Find out I got a leak. I'm responsible for the contractor, work for village. For the plan replacements, what's the, what doesn't make sense to me? There is no real advantage in doing it. In conjunction. With the C I P plan. Right?
Well.
Uh, if, if we're not going to use the same contractor, now I've got a private contractor. Uh, to pick up where your.
Again, there's, there's lots of those, and, and we work. Carefully with the property owner to coordinate that because we, there, there, there is, there is a timing issue. Because when we replace that, a portion of that lead service, we've stirred that up. That's, that's. It's not a condition that, that, that we want that property owner to deal with for any length of time.
Right. Okay, so the intention on plan replacements is that the homeowner. They, they choose a different contractor than, than your water main guy. Right? But you want them to work in conjunction. Timing, right? So you, so the, the timing is timely with your C I P.
And, and I, and I, I would say. To, we're, we're notifying those properties because they're known locations. We're notifying them in some cases a year in advance. This year's. Contract, which will be awarded upstairs at seven o'clock. Has only has two lead services on, we're doing three water main segments. You know.
Two of the.
And, and only two, only two of the, you know. Three dozen services on those two, on those three streets. We've already, we've already made that connection. We, both those property owners are on board and are, are, have taken steps to, uh, secure a contractor. Does that help?
It does, yeah. Uh, last thing, would we change our treatment once the five hundred lead service lines? Are replaced? Is there a reduction in chemical costs, if anything meaningful?
I, I don't expect that we would change the treatment. There may be a reduction in the amount. Of spore acid repeating, because then we'll be kind of at that maintenance dose opposed to a proactive trying to make sure everything's, uh, coated and protected.
We've crunched the numbers on. Services on the fifteen years left in our plan. It's only about a third of those, so it's.
Are, are part of our plan, right?
Yeah. There's quite a few that would still be out.
Yeah, it would certainly make life easier if all five hundred were on mains that we plan to replace in the next ten years, but that. Okay.
Any other?
Question. How we understand where the funding for this, um, comes from? Is it from the, uh, C I P? Uh. Supplemented by the individual homeowner, or is there general fund? Uh, support as well?
We, the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar budgeted in calendar year twenty-three budget is in the water fund in that. In this, it's a C I P, a line item in the water.
It's, it's about water funds.
Rate supported. That's water rates, water rates support. So that would, that would just be. In the villages, cost share. Available budget.
So that would be. Essentially, all the, um, our users in the village. Providing, quite frankly, subsidy to everybody else. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and so then. Which is not terribly atypical, um, if you look at the water fund generally, which has invested. Tens of millions of dollars in its lifetime in various main improvements that. Perhaps don't touch certain parts of the community but touch others. So it, I mean, I, I, I get where you're coming from.
It's a philosophical thing. And then the other, other question is, what is the appropriate? Subsidy. Um, you know, having been through this here, Oak Park and Evanston. Um, Oak Park and Evanston, um, except for very, very low income families, there's no subsidy. I do feel this is a generous program. I'm not saying I'm against it, but, um, I want to make sure that if we do it. Um. People understand that the great community, we're really doing them a big, big favor.
I would, the one note I would make to that point, which I think is a good one. Um, is that some of those programs were in place prior to state law changing. And the understanding that I have is that many communities, including Evanston and Oak Park. Are contemplating a wholesale change to the other direction where the city and or village pays the entire cost of the placement. So it, I, I, I think it's going to be, it is going to be every community determining. What, uh, is appropriate, what they can afford. Uh, another aspect to the funding question. Uh, all of, all of these, uh, all of our communities have continued to dialogue with state. Representatives and senators about the state of Illinois. Providing resources, uh, through grants and reimbursements. Um, thus far, the state has indicated that's not a likely scenario, at least for communities like us. Uh, but that's an aspect of this that we're also going to continue to, um. To pursue because if we can seek additional resources in the course of a year, we may be able to do this more quickly. And I think that's. Everybody in their contemplation of a program like this is trying, as Trustee Vree was saying, you know. Doing it sooner generally is better for a number of reasons, right? It's not just the cost, it's the benefit of the. Um. No longer having a lead service line. So I, I think there is an interest in trying to move this along, but we're very early on. In the implementation stage of. This new state mandate. And so I think we even, we may reconsider. In the coming years, whether the program that we have in place is the right program for the next. Decade, uh, or not, and whether we tweak it, uh, on an annual basis.
So. I mean, the chart suggests. That the ten thousand dollar cap that we're talking about is. You know, generous compared to some of the others, but we don't, you know, we don't actually know whatever. And if we do ten. It's not unlikely that some of our neighbors are thinking about five, might say, okay.
I, I would, that's correct, but I would note too that we're, we're in the minority. In that, in that our code, by, by code, the, the, the entire lead, the entire service line is private. Hardly owned and maintained in Glencore. We're, we're in the minority of our, of our neighbors on that. And so you've got many communities that have historically only. Only held their property. You know, their property owner is responsible for, you know. Replacement, maintenance of the line from the box to the house. That the, that the municipality has historically. And had full responsibility for proportionance in the right way.
No, I'm, I'm, I, I, you know, we also want to sort of encourage people to do this. So I'm, I'm okay with. Half. Ten. And I'm actually, you know. Just because it seems to be nice to cut away. I'm okay with. Some smaller rounds for if we. Take your idea, okay, two years because there's a theory to draw that line. You say, okay, um. Five thousand cap. And twenty-five.
And twenty-two and twenty-one.
Kind of that way.
But not look back any further than twenty twenty-one is that's it.
You know, and, and, uh. Yeah, that's, that's, to me, I, I don't know how people think, but that seems. Now, there are obviously people in twenty are going to be aggravated, but. And, you know, if we went to twenty people in nineteen, it would be aggravated, you know?
On the other hand, for them, it's found money. They weren't anticipating getting any.
Right, right.
Now, we still would, um, continue the way of the means to reserve.
Oh, yeah. It's been, they were getting there. Yeah, the people who did stuff prior before.
We, we were, we've always, we always offered that.
Well, yeah, so I just want to make sure that it's not be catered for.
Yes.
Uh, I, I have one last question, um. Ten to twenty thousand dollars per lead service line is a pretty big range. I assume the drivers for that range are the length of the line? And what side of the street the water main is?
Correct.
So the large portion of that crop and street restoration.
Uh, but, but there'll be. If, if the main is located within the right away under the pavement, there's going to be a street path. What we've. What we have historically done and what we're proposing to continue is, uh. Is provide some, some level of servicing count for the permanent restoration, because that's an additional cost.
Just in the street, though.
Street and curb and anything within the public way. Uh, because those costs are, are going to be over and above that ten to twenty thousand range. For any, any utility contractor.
A question perhaps as we build out and, and finalize the policy that we'll bring back to you next one. With respect to the look back. Um. If we look back at, at what was placed in twenty-one and twenty-two and assume. Five thousand dollar cap. For those two years.
Five thousand for the first year, twenty-five hundred for the second year back.
Okay, well, either way. We're dipping into the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar number pretty significantly. And so I guess my question is. Do we convey perhaps to those homeowners that that may be? Resources that are made available in a future budget year if we have significant takers.
Yes.
To, uh, begin replacement in twenty twenty-three.
Yes.
Yes, more important to replace lead service lines than to compensate prior ones.
Yeah, I just want to make that.
No, I, I clarify that. I think we absolutely should say that. Um, and as a move out first. Too bad.
In, in regards to moving, are there? You know, it's basically becoming a special assessment for it. It hasn't let service line. Is there something we need to do to make sure? Buyers are protected, that they know they're getting their names in.
What do we do with it? You know, what happens, I mean, with. Is there something that we put on the title when we do this work?
There, there is not. I, I think, um, most. Realtors that are doing business in the North Shore are doing. Property, uh, information searches with the village, um, in many cases on behalf of buyers. There's, they're reviewing our. Property files. They are checking on that and it's, it's not, I'm not. Wrong in saying that I think that's a fairly commonly asked question at this point and from realtors. When somebody's buying a house, whether the. What, there's a lead service line?
Generally, yes.
I think the question of whether or not there's some sort of proactive measure. That ties to the title is a. I don't know that anybody's doing that right now, um. We could look into something, but I think that'd be a complicated. I mean, certainly. It's a real estate lawyer. Yeah. I must admit. I, I think some of it is, um. We have a, we have a higher level of awareness now with a program like this and with a, with a state mandate like this. Um, we certainly, I, I would say an aspect of this is that we are reaching out to the realtors who are doing business in the community. Who advise of these requirements on a, uh, going forward basis. And that may be a way to do that. Obviously, there may be people who, who are. Um. Not purchasing with a, with a realtor or something, but. Uh, let us look into some ways that perhaps we can be a little more pro. Proactive with the. The future folks.
People are always shocked when they move in, they find out something like they're shocked, they live next door to the business district. They're shocked, they live on a street that has a lot of cars on it. I mean, so. To the extent we can figure out a way to notify people, and also we would like to make sure we get, we don't get stuck with it.
I think. Oh, sorry. One, one, one final comment, at least from the staff perspective is. Director Larson's kicking, kicking me out of the table is that we, the placeholder in the C I P was, was, was done. While, while we, I think we showed two hundred and fifty thousand a year with an escalator. Was done, was, was. Was done before we had put, kind of put some meat on the bone on a proposed program. We're likely going to have to look at. In future budget years. Rate adjustments that are going to adjust that. The, the annual. Hours on the C I P.
Alternative financing and, and we already are aware that the I P A is offering some loan programs to Director Mau's point. It may not be available to communities like us. Um, but that those are. Programs we're going to have to look at, just given the scale.
One other is just the, so when someone has contracted, calls it for, and. Twenty grand. Um, do we have somebody who reviews that to make sure there's not a bunch of other things stuffed in there?
Yes, we, we'll have a, as I said. We'll have an application that, that'll, that'll mirror what we similarly require from the sanitary super side. So we're looking at those proposals and. And, and what's in and what's not. Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna. We, we talked about that too, and, and some of these utility contractors are notorious for, you know, they'll have a one-line description. Twenty thousand. We're gonna, we're gonna need them to break that down more than they do. And they have historical.
Anybody else? Okay, I think you guys probably have guidance for what. The sense of the board is. So we'll go to the next item. Which is the community survey, uh, survey and questions, uh, design recommendations, uh, communications manager, Kenny Hemcel.
Um, so Steph is currently working for the measuring, the little effects, community satisfaction survey. Uh, the survey is aligned with those current strategic plan to evaluate some of my community initiatives to determine satisfaction with those services in future. Um, it's also important to note that it tied into other village initiatives such as the influencing of the development of our, of the new strategic and comprehensive plans taking place this year. As well as defining goals and objectives for future budgets. And the overall desire to engage with the community in various ways. So the tentative timeframe, um, in December, we issued informal requests for quotes to administer the villages survey. Um, the villages' last two community surveys were conducted in twenty fifteen and twenty eighteen by E T C Institute. Um, so we, having been satisfied with the service provided by E T C for our past two surveys. Fast elected E T C. And administer the twenty twenty-three surveys. Um, proposed timeframe for the administration of this survey. It's January, we'll develop and the final survey, February, E T C will pass the survey and start collecting data with the finalized survey. March, we'll continue to collect and complete. Data collection and analysis and developing a final report that will be delivered to staff. And then in April, um, the goal is for staff to present the results to the village board and make the results publicly available. Um, and outline, integrate any feedback from the survey into the strategic plan and budget development, development process. Um. New this year, in addition to E T C's final report presented after the previous two surveys, E T C will develop an interactive online dashboard for viewing the results. Dashboard will allow the user to explore the data in different ways. Um, interacting with trends, G I mapping, benchmarking, priority analysis and cross tabular data analysis. Um, it'll also incorporate the data from the past two surveys, so there's, so the user is able to. Ask, um, hearing results. The twenty fifteen and twenty nineteen surveys, um. Administration of them will be similar to the, or the twenty twenty-three survey will be similar to the twenty fifteen. Survey administration, part of the hobby will be mailed, as well as the option to take it online. Um, as you can see, the villages had a high response rate and a high opening level of ninety-five percent for the past two ser- surveys. E T C is fairly confident that we'll be able to reach those same, uh, response and. Um, the infographic of results from the past two surveys were in the packets, as well as the takeaways from those surveys. Um, and the results of both of those past surveys will remain available on the website. As well as they'll become available on this new interactive data dashboard. Um, especially before the process for twenty twenty-three year mirror, what we did in twenty nineteen and twenty fifteen, including the recommended priorities for the survey. Um, which are listed on. Patient. Um, for reference, the final survey from twenty nineteen was included in the packet. This will be our starting point as we, um, work towards creating a final twenty twenty-three survey. These examples of the types of benchmarking questions that will be asked again on the satisfaction exception topics noted, um, slide. Steph recommends that the twenty twenty-three survey collect high-level satisfaction data on several service areas in addition to more specific topics related to major initiatives that the. Villages currently underway with or that are planned for the near future. Steph recommends these. Initiatives and service areas as topics for supplemental questions. However, they are presented tonight for discussion purposes. And can be replaced by other areas of interest by before. Um, it is also important to note that these areas are in addition to some benchmark questions that might be similar to, um, the supplemental areas. That being said. Or for any questions back. Or for any questions back?
Oh. Sammy, a quick question about. The two prior surveys, the response was eighteen and nineteen percent. That good?
Uh, yes.
And what's the basis for thinking? That it's represented?
I believe they they measured the demographic response, um. So this is my first time going through a case or a process, so I'm not entirely sure what's the analysis side yet, but I'm from the.
Yeah, and then in. We had some discussions. Um, four years ago before we did the twenty nineteen survey about whether or not. We were going to, instead of doing a mailed survey to every household, do a test sample, and the board at the time said, you know. Let's go to everybody, um, give everyone the opportunity to respond, um, an eighteen or nineteen percent response rate on a on a survey that goes to everyone. Is magnificently high. Um. I think the benchmark for most community wide surveys is five to eight percent response rates. Um, we in fact received an award from the E T C Institute for. A variety of things, the high level of satisfaction that was noted in the survey, but also response rates and um. I think based off of a sample that large. Which is essentially nearing twenty percent of the community, you you establish a very statistically relevant. Um, a group from from a response that high, so our hope, it's eerie how similar. Both of the last two were, I mean, they were, it was two responses different. Uh, from one survey to the next, but our hope is that and expectation is that that would be repeated again.
The the survey last time was quite long, as I recall. So, and it's part of the responses. Responded. One or more questions, not. Didn't have to be complete. It counts as a response.
I think there is a percentage and we can check on that. I think there was a percentage of questions that you had to respond to in order to be considered a a. Full response, but I I don't remember off the top of my head.
The point more is that, you know, let's. Try and keep them short, I think the last one, someone to pick back, I didn't get any golly was. It was, it was long, a lot to ask.
It was seven pages long.
Yeah.
Our, in our conversations with with the survey provider, they indicated it was too long as well. And urged us to find a way to get it at least six. And that's what we're working on.
Oh, we love free.
Yeah, I mean, it is comprehensive, and and when you look at it, I think to some degree. Why we also want to talk tonight is to understand. What are those supplemental areas that that we should seek additional information on top of the more generalized? Service level um questions and. You know, in twenty twenty, excuse me, in twenty nineteen, we added. Um. Seven questions. Uh, altogether. You know, really, the um. Their survey ended at. Question twelve, and we went all the way through. Really, the twenty twenty four. Uh, so there were twelve, roughly twelve questions and and variety of of responses under those questions that were added. I think that's more than we need to do. We dialed it back into certain areas of. Focus that the village has taken on since twenty nineteen. Obviously, a big thing that. Hadn't happened yet then was the pandemic and the response to the pandemic. That being said, we didn't necessarily. Staff level feel that a question rel- or set of questions relative to pandemic response was important, but. There were some important changes that came out of that, not the least of which relate to the downtown and. Um, some uh. Visible changes such as uh outdoor eating and dining and things like that. And should we be uh seeking additional insights on things like that specifically? Uh, diversity, equity and inclusion is another area that we really didn't focus much time on in twenty nineteen survey, and obviously. Um, the village has taken a much more um. Proactive role in those community discussions and uh the efforts of the council for inclusion. And community, for instance. Um, sustainability has grown quite a bit since twenty nineteen as well, and so that's, again, that's kind of the thinking behind um our. Uh. Presenting these topics, but what we wanted to make sure is if you don't think some of these topics are necessary, we won't include them. If you think there's something that's missing from this list, we'll work to include that, um, and we can change out and add. This is, this is an area of the survey that we do have a little bit of. variable flexibility.
My only suggestion is. Sort of go through. Look back and where have we been getting grapes? Make sure. That if there are areas where we've been getting rights. Uh, that we. You you know, perhaps inquire into that, and you know, we may, and we, you know, in in the government level, we may think. You shouldn't be griping, it's okay. But if we're getting ripe, so let's just make sure, so just think about where are people? On our case, and let's make sure we investigate that a little bit, find out if it's just few people or a lot.
Where do our survey providers say the optimum rate for the surveys? How somebody should be able to finish it?
Fifteen to twenty.
With that law.
Yeah, yeah, for a comprehensive survey, I think that's what they mentioned on the call we were on. Fifteen to twenty minutes is acceptable.
But we.
Like to suggest that we can forgive, we've been doing another survey on the conference plan, maybe some issues that have been highlighted. That's a good survey on the comp plan that will. Come to the surface again. Um, also, in my role as liaison to the preservation commission, I think we should continue to. Uh, go forward with the preservation commitment, collecting, I think it was on the previous survey. And that'd be good to. Develop some longitudinal analysis on something, so if we could keep that question. And um take a look at some of the responses we've received for the. Conference plan and see how that might be impacting future, that'd be great.
I I don't know anything about how to structure a survey, and this question will prove it. The. If you want to encourage as large or greater a response rate. Is there any way to? Sort of pick your highlighting questions and really shrink it down. But at the sides. And then say, oh, and if you're still interested in answering more, you know, thank you very much, if you're still interested in answering more questions. Here's some more. That we'd like you to, we'd like your input for. But you kind of feel like you've completed it. If you've done the shorter list.
I don't know. I think we'd like to talk to them about. How one would do that, you obviously can't. You could, I guess, um, with the the writ for the hard copy version. Might be, that might be more easily done in an electronic, but. I know one aspect of this is also trying to develop longitudinal data and, you know, kind of where we're, where we are seeing ourselves. Across surveys and, you know, this will be our our third. Um, and it gave really good insights over the last couple, particularly last time, to see where we improved and what we had done better. From the time before, and I think we want to try to maintain as much integrity in that as we can, but I see where you're coming from, that may be an aspect that we can work with them. To see what they might suggest. To kind of do both, yeah, it might, yeah, it might not be, but there might be something that you could. Use the concept of supplemental.
Seems like a good point to me, particularly, you know, they, what you said earlier is that they, you have to get to. Certain level of response for it to count as a response. Maybe they could. Or. Make sure those questions, the ones the people have to do and. If the ones that aren't. Are dead. Anybody else? Amy, thank you. And. You're gonna be back. Okay. Next item is the farmer's markets. Um, tell us our tale as well, tell us about our tale as well here.
No, I'll, I'll start with a brief overall market history, um, prior to twenty fifteen, it was run by the Glenn Co Chamber of Commerce. Um, twenty fifteen, the Glenn Co Chamber of Commerce contracted with Ben Sidon to run the market. Um, and then after the COVID nineteen pandemic. Um. The the chamber hired taste marketing to run the market. In twenty twenty one, when the chamber was absorbed into the neck, uh, Northfield Chamber of Commerce, which is now. Glenn Co Chamber of Commerce, the village took over the event and began working with taste marketing. Um. Little market history with taste marketing, so in twenty twenty one, the market was held in Wyman Green in twenty twenty two, several changes were made to. Improve intended attendance and vendor satisfaction, so. The market moved to Villageport to allow easier access and visual visualization from the downtown businesses. Um, as well as ease of setup for vendors, um, having located to pay that they could park their vehicles more easily and unload. Also adjusted hours, um, increased marketing and tried adding some special guests throughout the market, such as Rainbow County, to try to increase. Attendance. Despite all these changes, there was no visual impact in attendance. So following twenty twenty two season, staff met with taste marketing to debrief and discuss the future of the market. Ultimately, taste marketing has indicated that there isn't really a wish to manage the market going forward and expressed numerous concerns about whether it was worth continuing a farmer's market at all. Um. One of the concerns included an oversaturation of markets in the area. Um, there are larger markets on either end of our Thursday market. Which limits the value of our smaller market, people get their produce on Wednesday and they don't need to come to ours on Thursday, or they wait till Saturday, because that block will be for grocery shopping on the weekends. Um, with with those larger markets as well, vendors will also choose to allocate their resources and time to attending those larger markets. But, um, additionally, there's a lot of foot traffic at the market, but not a lot of buyers or weak customers for their weekly produce or purchasing other items. Um, vendors also, as well as across the country are struggling to find staff, so that was also a barrier for why they couldn't come ever. Or had to altogether stop coming. Vendors eventually did also to not find it work their while to continue coming, there were a lot of purchasing purchases being made. Um, resulting in obviously finding in attendance hard vendors by the end of the. So next steps, we'd like to discuss with the village board, um, regarding the real re-allocation of resources. Um, staff is ultimately in agreeance with taste marketing and these express concerns. Um, without their party like taste marketing, managing a market is difficult, I'm. I'm saying. Um, and there's not many other market managers, um, that's due to taste marketing are kind of the big ones. Um. And it may be more beneficial both financially and staff wise to consider refocusing our efforts on building new devices or adding to existing ones. Um, that being said. They open any students and discussion.
So apparently the Chamber of Commerce is doing a big thing in Winnetka, that's where they choose their their energy.
Now, and that has been an ongoing. Um, the priority of of that chamber for really about twenty five years, so it's not a new. Initiative by any means, um, and they have. We've been to Winnetka's farmer's market, it is. One of the best in this region, um, it's excellent. Abbotston is excellent, Deerfield is excellent. Northbrook is is getting more excellent, um, Ravinia is, and and I think quite frankly, the struggle we have had. Is um establishing the right day, the right time, you've changed it several times. Sammy's slide alludes to some of those changes, but. For a long time, um, it was on. Village Court, we moved it to Wyman Green for about six years. Um, Wyman Green was great. But we've never had. Much foot traffic, or we start the season with great foot traffic and by July. It's it's slowed to a trickle and. It's a chicken or the egg, you know, it's it's, do you have the right vendors? You need people to attend, so the right vendors continue to come back, and that has been a challenge. We started with fifteen, I don't think we maintained fifteen. All through the season. In terms of total number of vendors.
I think one of the things was your examples of successful ones, also large.
Yeah.
Because you do need them.
I will say there were some vendors that did very well. Um, they generally were not. Farmed or produce vendors, they were, they had a product of some sort. Cut flowers, um, prepackaged alcoholic beverages, um. A few others, there was a chocolate, um, a cheese vendor, those vendors tended to do quite well. Um. One of the things we've started talking to the Park District about is ways to perhaps integrate those types of vendors into. Park District's summer concert series, can we bring vendors that may be um. Complimentary to something that they're doing, um. We've talked about integrating some of those vendors into like the lights, um, and other events. The sidewalk sale in June. Even possibly, we haven't talked to Amder Productions yet, but I know how to integrate them even into the art festival and things like that. Um. But a weekly. Market just has struggled in my co, and while there are people who. I think were regulars and showed up on a regular basis. The critical mass just was not there.
Right, um. It was, it was just kind of a pretty sad show this year. And. Last year too.
And and I was, one thing to say is, it wasn't for lack of trying, I think, you know, we, the village applied resources in the first. This year for the first time. It's significantly, um, Sammy redesigned all the signage. We um commissioned new signs that were placed on downtown streetlight pan- uh. Streetlight banners, um. There was a weekly email that was pushed out from the village. Uh, relative to the, to the uh farmer's market specifically, in addition to everything else that we were doing. Significant social media campaigns. It just didn't get us there.
Well, it's okay, so, you know, maybe we just have to, I mean. Maybe we just have to let it go. Think about having a question. Our surveys, but maybe we have to let it go and see. Or what the response is, because it does not appear. That there'll be a lot of people with torches and pitchforks in the next meeting saying, where's my? On the market, because they weren't going to.
Yes. That's helpful, thank you.
All right, um, any other business for our? Maybe the whole evening. And if not. There are motion to adjourn. Some, or second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.